A quorum being present, the second half of our annual town meeting will now come to order. Madam Clerk, has the warrant been properly posted as required by the general laws of the town of Granby?
Yes, it has.
Select Board Chairman, Mr. Sexton, will now lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I bless you, Mr. Sexton, and the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Today at town meeting, sitting on the stage is the Finance Board, to my left, the Town Clerk, the Town Attorney, the Town Administrator, and our Select Board. Sitting in the second row on the floor is our School Committee. Please raise your hand if you'd like to discuss a motion, and when I recognize you, please stand, and I will have a mic runner come to you this time, so you can stay in your seat. You must state your name and your address before commenting, and you are allowed one question or comment per time at the mic. Do not direct your comment or your questions to a particular person at town meeting. Direct your discussion or your questions to me, and then I will direct them to the appropriate person to answer your questions. In your handouts that you received, you have the Finance Committee Capital Expenditures Book, in which you'll find the warrant articles and a short explanation of each article. You have the Guide to Granby Town Meeting, which tells you town meeting procedure, and you have an amendment worksheet, which you can use if you want to make an amendment on any of the motions tonight. If you are a non-resident or a non-voter, please sit in the designated area for non-voters to my right in the auditorium, unless I've already given you permission to sit somewhere else on the floor. The moderator will now recognize Ms. Dufresne for a comment.
I just wanted to announce that, as you all know, Granby Charter Days is happening Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. We sent out a sign-up sheet for volunteers. We need 70 hours of volunteers, and as of date, right now, we have 14 hours of coverage. We cannot do this without you guys. There's only seven of us on the committee, and we need your help. So if you know of anyone that can help out with parking, or with various activities around the fair, cleaning up tables, doing trash, and just being runners for us, that would be greatly appreciated, because, again, we can't do it without your help. So if you can just let people know, we do have a Facebook page that you can sign up at on the signup genus, and anything you can give would be greatly appreciated.
The moderator will now recognize Mr. Sexton of the Select Board to speak.
I just wanted to really take a minute and thank the people for coming out this evening, and I also like to take the opportunity, really, to remind people that who are not here this evening how important our town meetings are. As I look out there and I see so many empty seats, it can be discouraging. So I'm hoping in the future, people understand what is at stake when we take the time to come up here and vote on budgets that affect people's lives and other things that happen in our town. So with that said, I'm hoping in the future that people do take the time to come out for our town meetings, because it is very important.
The moderator now calls on Finance Committee Chairman John Libera to speak.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I'm John Libera for the Finance Committee. The Finance Committee has reviewed the warrant and recommends approval of Articles 1, 2, 4, and 5. We will offer an amendment to Article 2 to reflect our normal line item designations. Our recommendation on Article 3 will be made when the article is presented. This is a comment for the special town meeting. It'll be coming up soon as I finish. Thank you.
The moderator will now call on School Committee Chairman Bartos for her report.
My name is Jennifer Bartos, and I am the Chair of the Granby School Committee. First, I would like to thank the Town Administrator, Mr. Martin, Mr. Sexton, our Select Board liaison, as well as the other members of the Select Board, and the Finance Committee for collaborating in the development of the fiscal year '24 school budget. I would be remiss if I didn't mention the administrative team, leadership team, and staff at both schools, notably Mr. Sullivan and Mr. Dorman, for all of their hard work in preparing the school budget this year. I would like to thank Mr. Martin and Mr. Sexton for working so diligently with us. Our joint committee meetings, phone conversations, and numerous email correspondence were all very beneficial. These helped the budget process in its entirety to be much more collaborative. This year, the budget you see in the booklet is our total ask, and we do not see the need to ask for additional funding on town meeting floor for the operational budget. This required creative problem-solving, good collaboration, hard work, and a willingness to compromise on all sides in order to get the budget the school committee is presenting tonight. The school committee, the administrative and leadership teams within the schools, all want to offer the best for our students and staff. Our main priorities are to provide high-quality education for the students in Granby Public Schools, as well as ensuring that the staff have the resources, training, materials, and technology to do their jobs. The school budget that is being presented and voted on tonight is very lean. This is only an overall 3.38 increase from fiscal year '23, but with inflation closer to 10%, this represents a loss in services. The Operational Service Division increased out-of-district tuition by 14%. Over the last decade, it has averaged an annual increase of only 2%. We project this will cost the district approximately $170,000. This, in addition to other factors, means that despite the only 3.38% increase from year to year, we will lose services that are currently being offered. There are next-to-no contingencies in this budget, which may put the schools in the unfavorable position of having to come to the town by way of special town meetings to ask for money from reserve accounts or for unanticipated costs that may arise. These unanticipated costs would have to cover any expenses beyond planned maintenance on either building and for special education placements. We work very hard to prevent these types of costs and find ways to address them when we can. But there are costs that come up that are outside of what we have budgeted for and out of our control. Last year at town meeting, we as a town voted for two capital improvement articles to work on improving things at the high school, one for kitchen repairs and the other for gym renovations. After the Joint Committee of FinCom and Select Board Chairs met, they found that we could only go forward with the kitchen project, because if we did both projects, we would trip the threshold determined by the state to require us to bring the entire building up to the current code for handicap accessibility. We now have to wait another three years to do any significant project without tripping the same threshold. To be clear, the kitchen project has just recently been put out to bid. The high school building is continuing to age. There are a number of projects, like the gym renovation, that will be very costly that should be considered. The entire situation is disheartening. I agree with what Mr. Libera and the Finance Committee wrote in this booklet. It is crucial that we start addressing what needs to be done with the building next door and the future of educating the students currently there and who expect to be there in the future. However, I disagree with the notion that our only solution is to raise taxes through another tax override. We must engage in difficult conversations about how to move our town forward and alleviate constant financial concerns. While I don't claim to have all the answers, I believe the time to safeguard the future of our town, especially our school community, is now. We need to consider the future of education for the town of Granby. This conversation will have a profound impact on the entire town. The school committee and school leaders are eager to contribute, but the decisions do not rest solely on our shoulders. This conversation and the resulting decisions cannot be delayed any longer and should be part of a broader discussion on the state of our town. By involving more voices and fostering creative thinking, we may discover opportunities to generate new sources of revenue that can benefit all town departments. Some opportunities may require investment, while others may not. Raising taxes should not be the sole approach to increase revenue in Granby. Undoubtedly, these discussions will bring challenges, but we can't afford to postpone them any further. We teach our children, our students, that challenging conversations and uncomfortable moments can lead to growth and improvement. It's time for us to follow our own advice. Thank you.
Since it's now 7:14, the moderator will call for a motion to recess the annual town meeting and call to order the special town meeting. Second?
Second.
All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. All opposed? A quorum being present, the special town meeting will now come to order. Madam Clerk, has the warrant been properly posted as required by the general laws of the town of Granby?
Yes, it has.
Say again what I said?
So the moderator will now recognize Mr. Libera to speak again on the special town meeting.
Thank you, Madam Moderator, and I apologize for the confusion before. The Finance, as I said before, the Finance Committee has reviewed the warrant, and we recommend you approve Articles 1, 2, 4, and 5. We'll offer an amendment to Article 2, and the amendment will basically change some items there to fit into the designations that we use for budgets. And our recommendation on Article 3 will be made when the article is presented. Thank you very much.
The moderator will now recognize Mr. Sexton to present the motion under Article 1.
Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to transfer from the gasoline department expense budget the sum of $15,000 for the purpose of funding the legal department expense budget for fiscal year 2023.
Second?
Second.
Is there any questions or discussion? Come on up. Oh, I'm sorry. Stand up. Go ahead, Michaline.
Rich DeMaraki, Bachelor Street. I believe the legal is under the Select Board budget. Could you tell me how much is in the legal budget now, and we're adding $15,000 to that number? Could you tell us what the major items were that the town council worked on during the year?
Just give us a minute, Rich.
Currently, the legal budget has $12,000 in it, left over to the end of the year. What we have had, we've had a couple of lawsuits instituted at the state level against the town that has required us to retain special counsel. And also, we haven't been using labor counsel as part of our union negotiations for the last 10 years. However, this year, we decided to start doing it, because we do know that labor laws have changed quite a bit. We want to make sure that any contracts that we negotiate incorporate any and all the changes that have occurred on the national level.
Wait, excuse me, wait for the microphone.
What will be the total budget for 2024?
24 or 23? It'll be $74,179.
Any other questions or comments? Oh, go ahead.
Thank you, George Randall, 52 Taylor. I question whether this is a good idea to do this or not, and at the risk of being totally uninformed, I intend to vote no on this, and I would recommend the other voters to vote no on it as well.
Thank you. Any other discussion? In order for this motion to pass, it must pass by a majority. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? The motion passes by a majority. The moderator will now call on Mr. Sexton to present the motion under Article 2.
Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to transfer from the gasoline department expense budget the sum of $12,000 and the public buildings department personal service budget the sum of $13,000, for a total of $25,000 for the purpose of funding the public buildings department expense and capital budgets for fiscal year 2023.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Come on up, Jeremy.
Jeremy Carrier, 2 Phillips Circle, Building Department Maintenance Supervisor. I just wanted to let people know that this is mainly one of the capital items that was in there, something that came up. We put the budget in, and the overage for that was because of a code change that was brought to our attention, that we're unable to erect the structure without making a fire-rated material. So that put that product over. The other items are for unexpected expenditures that came up through the year, mainly maintenance vehicles, that we did not plan on, but we needed to have those vehicles in service, or we would be without them. Thank you, Madam Moderator.
Any other questions or discussion? Come on.
Janice Krovich, 99 Kendall Street. Just a question, we keep moving everything from the gasoline department expense budget. I'm probably the only one that doesn't know this, but what is the gasoline department expense budget for? Are we going to be hurting something by moving all this money?
The gasoline budget is basically for all the fuel used by municipal vehicles, whether it's gasoline or diesel. And when we put the budget together, we were at the point where gas prices were increasing dramatically, and we projected them to be probably around $5 a gallon over the course of the year. However, we lucked out, and they were only about averaging around $4 a gallon. So with that savings, we can take that money and help offset some of these other overexpenditures.
Mr. Glassman?
Robert Glassman, 37 North Street, speaking for the Finance Committee. We wish to amend Article 2 to read, "We move the town vote to transfer from the gasoline department expense budget the sum of $12,000, public buildings department personal services budget the sum of $13,000, for a total of $25,000, for the purpose of funding the public buildings department expense budget in the amount of $15,000, and the public buildings department capital budget in the amount of $10,000 for fiscal year 2023." This is no change in the dollar amount, but it does place the money into the usual line items that we use for these types of expenditures.
So can I have a second?
Second.
Can I have a motion to stop debate on the main article in order to discuss this amendment?
So moved. Second.
So now on the floor is the amendment that Mr. Glassman and the Finance Committee just suggested. I can read it again, so you hear it clearly. "We move the town to vote to transfer from the gasoline department expense budget the sum of $15,000, the snow and ice department personal service budget the sum of $40,000, the snow and ice department..."
No. We're on Article 2.
Did I give you the wrong one?
Yeah.
Try that one.
Try again. "We move the town to transfer from the gasoline department expense budget the sum of $12,000 and the public buildings department personal services budget the sum of $13,000, for a total of $25,000, for the purpose of funding the public buildings department expense budget in the amount of $15,000, and the public buildings department capital budget in the amount of $10,000 for fiscal year 2023." Is any discussion on that amendment? Go ahead and stand. The mic's coming to you.
Rich DeMaraki, Bachelor Street. Does the person in charge of that department agree with that change?
Jeremy Carrier, 2 Phillips Circle, Maintenance Supervisor. Yes, I do agree with that change. I believe they're just putting it in the proper line item for it. I don't see any change to it.
Any other questions on the amendment before we vote on the amendment? So in order for the amendment to pass, it must pass by a majority. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? The amendment passes by a majority. So now we're going to go back to the motion as amended to discuss. So does anybody have any further discussion on Article 2 as amended? Okay, so now we must vote on Article 2 as amended. So all those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? Article 2 as amended passes by a majority. The moderator calls on Mr. Sexton to present the motion under Article 3.
Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to transfer from the gasoline department expense budget the sum of $15,000, the snow and ice department personal service budget the sum of $40,000, the snow and ice department expense budget the sum of $10,000, the workers' compensation expense budget the sum of $30,000, for a total of $95,000 for the purpose of funding the fire department personal services and expense budget for fiscal year 2023.
Second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on the motion under Article 3? Go ahead, Mr. Glassman.
Article 3 is really two separate issues. Our recommendation is to approve the transfer of $10,000 to the expense budget. Our recommendation for approval of the transfer to personal services is contingent upon a satisfactory explanation to the meeting tonight of the circumstances resulting in the over expenditure to include the discussions with the Finance Committee in preparing the fiscal '23 budget, the annual town meeting vote in May 2022, when the staffing structure was changed such that an over expenditure would occur, and what, if any, steps were taken to comply with municipal finance regulations.
Any questions on the amendment?
Not yet.
Okay. Who can answer that?
No, 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 don't get into the amendments. Yeah, I want the explanation. If we get a satisfactory explanation, it's recommended.
In order to have this question answered, any permission from town meeting to allow the fire chief to speak? I need a majority, so all those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. Come on forward.
Mike O'Neil, Fire Chief. To answer the question, it was a negotiation year for the department, so the union got a raise, so that's part of the reason. Our call volume went up from 950 calls to 1,400 calls last year. We've had members on extended leaves of absence from the department, and I have one member on injury right now. We've had unexpected failures of apparatus that's aging, along with gear that has gone up from $2,800 to $4,800 in the middle of a budget cycle that we needed to replace. All the stuff that we replaced is for safety of personnel.
That answer your question?
Well, we answered a very small portion.
Stay up there. Mr. Glassman, do you have another question, or do you want to ask your question again?
What we were looking for was to just, really, to talk about the over expenditure rather than the equipment. The equipment repairs were fully cognizant of, had no problem whatsoever. But we'd like an explanation as to how the over expenditure occurred. In other words, why it occurred. There was no money for it.
The over occurred because we needed to provide an ALS, ammo and service and fire department to the town of Granby.
Joe Fernia, Finance Committee, Taylor Street. I think what we really want to focus on is that, let's look at these expenditures, repairs, all of that. So of this $95,000, what percentage of that would be related to mandatory increases in wages because of union contracts? What would be, what percentage of that money would be related to extended call leave and some of that? So we're just trying to understand some of these ways, because one of the issues that we talked about last year was basically that there was a discussion to hire more personnel. We asked that a study be done to determine exactly what we should do. We approved one additional person, okay? So part of our understanding is because nothing is broken out, trying to do our due diligence, was this related to hiring more people? You know, so we're just trying to get a better handle. You know, we're not saying anything was done wrong. We're just trying to get a better handle on really why this occurred, why it's justified, because, you know, we don't just want to tie everything into inflation. You know, we're trying to control the budget a bit.
Madam Moderator, can I just make a comment?
Sure.
Chief, correct me if I'm wrong. During the course of the year, we, the budget was really geared around using on-call people to fill shifts. However, what has happened is, we can only get those people who can come in as our part-timers when they're scheduled, and we don't allow them. And we've been finding that these people, even though they have signed up with the department, aren't able to give us the level of service necessary to fill the vacant shifts. And again, like Chief O'Neil said, we do have a, one of our full-timers who has been out on paternity leave, we'll call it that. We do, we have- We do, we have had a changeover in our staff. We had to fill their shifts while we were advertising and hiring a replacement. And right now, we now have a full-timer who just was classified as injured on duty and will probably be out for an extended period of time. A lot of this shortfall is the overtime budget, because the full-timers are taking up those shifts, and we're paying probably twice the hourly rate for the full-timers than we would for normally a part-time shift coverage.
John Libero, speaking for the Finance Committee. There are a couple of issues here that I think everybody should be aware of, and I'll remind you of one thing in particular. At last year's annual town meeting, before the meeting, the fire department put in a budget which had an increase of eighty-three thousand dollars more than what we had approved in the budget. So we reduced the budget by eighty-three thousand dollars, and we said that we, the Finance Committee, did not understand why they needed to hire extra people. They'd asked to hire a number of extra people. We approved one in the budget, and it was presented in the meeting. For the rest of it, and this is the key thing, for the rest of it, they had a long discussion at the town meeting, and the town meeting agreed with us that we would take that eighty-three thousand dollars, and we didn't completely take it away, we put it in the reserve fund. We put it in the reserve fund, and it was going to be there so that a study was done, was supposed to have been done by the fire department and ambulance department, to show why they would need extra people, what was happening. Nothing was done. So unless this money was spent in the last two weeks, you've had a whole long time to try to do a study, and a whole long time to identify that money was, was spent. We were also of the opinion, which Consular could tell us whether we were wrong or not, that before anybody spends any money, unless there's an absolute dire emergency, they have to have permission to spend that money. You can't just say, "Well, I think this is in our best interest of the town, so we're going to spend the money." It doesn't work like that, I don't believe, does it, Consular?
Well, regarding that, certainly typically money has to be appropriated before it can be spent. When we have a fire department, though, and a strong chief, typically they have their budget, and the chief, as a strong chief, as Granby has elected to have, the chief controls how that money is spent.
Correct. But if the money isn't there, what happens? We didn't have any problem spending the money how, how decided was spent. We were at a problem that there had been a certain amount that was approved, and that was it. The rest of it was not approved. The rest of it was said was available after a study was done that would enable the Finance Committee to tell the town that we weren't being made fools of, that there was a reason for expending this additional money. None of that has happened, as far as we know. All right?
Is there further discussion? Go ahead, right here, in- Oh. Elaine, do you want to, you have a question too? Okay. So-
Dennis Hool, Two Thirty-Nine Chicagoe Street, retired fire chief. It seems to me right now there is a difference of opinions and also lack of communication. I believe Chris, chief, and the board, Finance Board should have been able to discuss this before town meeting and had the proper answers that they needed to back this article. This is ridiculous. This special town meeting has been posted for thirty days, correct? There is plenty of time to get the three departments together and discuss what's going on. Thank you.
It's a fourteen, it's a fourteen-day post, just so you know. It's a fourteen-day post, not thirty.
Madam Moderator, may I comment?
Elaine first, and then-
Elaine LaFleur, Two Thirty-Five Chicagoe Street. I'm concerned, would like to know why thirty thousand for workmen's compensation. Are y'all paying the injured person directly, or are you using an insurance company? And the person that's on paternity leave, as you know, in the state of Massachusetts, we have what's called paid family medical leave, which the employee pays a portion and the employer pays a portion. So where does the paternity leave money, are we compensating that person above and beyond the twenty weeks that they're entitled to, to care for a child or family member? Thank you.
First off, under the Family Medical Leave Act for the state is, the municipalities have the option of opting in or opting out, number one. We have chosen not to opt in. Oh, yes, because we contacted the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Department of Labor, and we asked them that question, and we were told in the legislation municipalities are not required to participate, okay? We have chosen not to do that, number one. As to workers' compensation, the excess money there is, is we were, we had over budgeted the amount of wages that were subject to the Workers' Comp Act, and therefore we have excess money in the budget that we are able to use to help offset this deficit.
Mr. Libera?
John Libero, again for the Finance Committee. First of all, I'd like to say that, for the record, that we agree a hundred percent with Dennis, that this should have been done a long time ago. We were not notified before the budget, before these articles were discussed at the Select Board meeting. We were not given them ahead of time. We thought that we were supposed to be given articles ahead of time so we could comment to the Select Board before they actually had their meeting to vote on the articles. That didn't happen. We found these online and discovered that we had to suddenly do something, and so that's why we are where we are today.
Did you have a question? Yep, in the bleachers. No, you, yep.
Anthony Serini, Three Seater Drive. Since we're discussing the fiscal year '23 budget, the way the budget process, and correct me if I'm wrong, the fire department has to put forth an estimate of the number of calls that they're going to be able to respond to the next fiscal year. So it's basically a guess as to the number of calls that they're going to handle. The number put forth obviously was exceeded. As time goes on, they have to continue to pay the firefighters and the paramedics to respond to calls. How do I want to put this? You can't stop paying the personnel from coming in. You have to continue to pay them. That's why this amount is being asked for.
Want to answer that?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
John Libero for the Finance Committee. By the way, we're neighbors. I also agree entirely with what you're saying. But the, but a further piece of what happens in the budget process and under the laws of Granby and the laws of Massachusetts is that if a budget is going to be exceeded, expected to be exceeded for whatever kind of reason, for emergency purposes, it can be exceeded. Safety purposes, everybody knows that, and it's never been a problem, then after the fact, that is cleaned up with the budget process as soon as possible. But this is different, because normally, if you know that something's going to continue for a long time, you're supposed to tell people and get authority to spend the money ahead of time, not wait until six months have passed. Like I said, if this happened two weeks ago, no problem. I don't believe it happened two weeks ago. I believe this happened a long, long time ago during the year, and nobody bothered to remember that the town meeting said, "Do a study, tell us what's going to happen, give us a reason, show us," and the money is there. It's put aside in the reserve fund, and it can be transferred to the fire department budget. None of that happened. This money was spent without the town being notified at all that there was a problem with the budget.
You want to answer, and then I'm, yep.
So it's not an excuse. I came into this budget, so I've only been the chief for a year, so this budget was already proposed and implemented prior to me coming into the fire department.
Mr. Bale?
Instead of scolding the fire chief, can we just move the question? We're voting on whether we're going to pay a debt from last fiscal year or not.
So we have someone asking to move the question, which basically means to see if town meeting is ready to vote on this motion. In order to move the question, I need a second, and I need a two-thirds approval to move the question, so-
Madam, Madam, do we have an opportunity to amend the motion? We're voting on moving it right now?
We're voting on moving it, because somebody, so if the, so if the town would like to stop all debate and vote on this now, we need a two-thirds vote. If the town wants to hear more debate, then you would vote down, you'd vote no for moving the question. So all those in favor of moving the question, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? The motion to move the question passes by a two-thirds majority. So we are now going to vote on the motion under Article Three as drafted. This must pass by a majority. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? The motion passes by a majority.
Madam Moderator?
Yes.
Could you let people speak, if more people wanted to speak on that issue?
So, excuse me, but when someone asks to move the question, I have to ask the town what the town meeting wants. The town voted to move the question, they didn't want to hear any more debate. That's parliamentary procedure. The moderator calls on Mr. Sexton to present the motion under Article Four.
Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to transfer from the retirement department expense budget, the sum of twenty thousand dollars, for a purpose of funding the health insurance department expense budget for fiscal year 2023.
Second? Any discussion under the motion for Article Four? For the motion to pass, it must pass by a majority. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? The motion passes unanimously. The moderator calls on Mr. Sexton to present the motion under Article Five.
Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to transfer from the gasoline department expense budget, the sum of one thousand dollars, for the purpose of funding the dog revolving fund expense budget for fiscal year 2023.
Second? Any discussion? Come on, stand up, please.
What is the dog revolving-
Can I have your name and address?
Oh, sorry, yes, Janice Kovach, Ninety-Nine Kendall. What is the dog revolving fund expense budget? Is that for basically what, you know, if there's animals wandering, they can get them? What is that exactly?
Kevin O'Grady, Sixty-Two Amer Street, Chief of Police, and in charge of the animal control. That's exactly what it is. That is the funding for the animal control officer for the year. The, just to elaborate, that thousand dollars is after we budgeted, we then learned that our former animal control officer was leaving, and we had to train and inoculate the new animal control officer.
Any other questions or discussion? In order for this motion to pass, it must pass by a majority. All those in favor? Thank you. Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. The moderator now calls for a motion to dissolve the special town meeting and call to order the annual town meeting. Second? All those in favor? Thank you. Any opposed? So now we will move on to the annual town meeting, Article Twenty. So the moderator calls Ms. Dufresne to present the motion under Article Twenty.
Madam Moderator, the town, I move the town vote to raise and appropriate five hundred and thirty-nine thousand, three hundred and forty-six dollars to operate the municipal solid waste department. Wages, five thousand, expenses, five hundred and thirty-four thousand, three hundred and forty-six dollars, for a total of five hundred and thirty-nine thousand, three hundred and forty-six. And that forty thousand, three hundred and five dollars be raised from municipal solid waste receipts. A hundred and sixty-six thousand be raised from retained earnings, and three hundred and thirty-three thousand and forty-one dollars be raised from tax levy.
Second? Discussion?
This article is to fund the curbside collection program in town. It also funds the cost of taking our receptacles to the Springfield Materials Recycling Facility and taking our waste to the McNamara Transfer Station located in Springfield.
Any questions or discussion? In order for this motion to pass, it must pass by a majority. All those in favor? Thank you. Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. The moderator is now going to call on Mr. Libera to speak to the meeting again.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. This is John Libero for the Finance Committee. First of all, I want to thank all the department heads for their participation in the budget process this year. Mr. Martin gave out guidelines which were pretty tough, and particularly in times of inflation, and we want to thank everybody for working as hard as they could to fit within the guidelines. The nuts and bolts of the budget are also written on it. And I want to speak about just the last part of what our write-up is, because I think it's important that you hear what it is that we have to say. It starts with the considerations for the future portion. Eight years, eight straight years of experience is hard to ignore. Not impossible, but hard. That was the last sentence of the Finance Committee's report to the town at last year's annual town meeting. The experience we talked about was spending much more money than was available from the current income of the town. As a collective group, we, the citizens of Granby, had decided to once again say, "Let's ignore it for another year." The financial situation is now worse. Last year's town meeting approved two warrant articles for expensive reservations to the junior senior high school building, with the proviso that the Select Board and the Finance Committee jointly look into the legalities of spending those amounts of money. One article was for kitchen renovations, and the other was for gym reservations, renovations. In consultation with a building inspector, the joint committee discovered that only the kitchen renovations could be done without running a file of a Massachusetts regulation which would require the entire building to be brought up to the current code for handicap accessibility. Furthermore, and this is worse, no additional significant worse, work can be done on the building for three more years unless the entire building is brought up to code as part of that work. Granby needs to know its options. For example, is the town willing to pass another large tax override for new construction or renovation? Given that the town's average family home value is in the bottom twenty-six percent of the Commonwealth, and the town's tax rate is already in the top twelve percent, that would be a challenging question to resolve. This is a major issue for the town. It is imperative that the Select Board or a committee working for the Select Board investigate both whether the town has the appetite for another major tax override, and whether there are viable alternatives for educating Granby's junior senior high school students. In conclusion, the days of business as usual for Granby is gone. The town might attempt to delay necessary expenditures, forego capital investments, postpone maintenance expenses, and divert funds from capital accounts to pay for daily operations, but a day of reckoning is coming. What Granby can't do is ignore the town's biggest fundamental fiscal problem. What happens if the junior senior high school building figuratively falls apart? The town absolutely needs a solution in the next three to five years. Can Granby survive this? Of course it can, but choices must be made. Operational necessities, service conveniences, capital needs, and preparing for the future will all make computing demands for the town's revenue. Granby needs to choose the mix it can live with, and it needs to make its choice well before a financial disaster occurs. Thank you. Thank you.
The moderator now calls on Ms. Dufresne to present the motion under Article 21.
Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to raise and appropriate $251,321 to operate the sewer department. Wages $11,072, expenses $181,730, debt $58,519, for a total of $251,321. And that $239,021 be raised from sewer receipts, and $12,300 be raised from retained earnings.
Second? Discussion?
This article is to fund the sewer department in town.
Any questions? In order for this motion to pass, it must pass by a majority. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? The motion passes unanimously. The moderator now calls on Ms. Dufresne to present the motion under Article 22.
Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to raise and appropriate $421,782 to operate the ambulance department. Wages $307,332, expenses $99,284, capital is $15,166, for a total of $421,782. And that $421,782 be raised from ambulance receipts.
Second? Any discussion?
This article will fund the ambulance department.
Do you still have a question? Go ahead, stand up, please.
Hi, Janice, 99 Kendall Street. So, how does this compare to before, what we normally would appropriate for the ambulance Are we in line? Are we way ahead? And plus, we had the over expenditure, right? It was the fire and ambulance, I guess.
Okay.
No.
Come on up, Chief.
So, this is proposing the budget for our ambulance going forward for fiscal year 24. This is what we're proposing for medical supplies, our operating budget for that ambulance, plus the salaries for the EMTs and paramedics, plus the per diems staff that we have. Does that answer your question?
Wait for the microphone, please.
So, with the over expenditures, does this, like, cover us from what would happen, keep us from happening again, kind of thing, to the best of our ability, anyways?
To the best of our ability, yes. But again, cost of medical supplies can go up in the middle of the year. Again, not to put inflation into it, but that can happen. We've gotten prices for everything going forward, and that's the projected cost around the ambulance department.
Thank you. Any other questions? Go ahead.
Yeah. Point of clarification, last year's budget, we expended $389,855, and the department's asking for this for $21,782. So, there you go, $33,000 increase, or $32,000.
Thank you. In order for this motion to pass, it must pass by a majority. All those in favor? Thank you. Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. The moderator now calls on Ms. Dufresne to present the motion under Article, oh, I'm sorry. Not you. The moderator now calls on Mr. Libera to present the motion under Article 23. Well, we're going to do Item 1 first, and then we will go through the rest of the items. After we finish Item 1, I will explain how we're going to do that after Item 1.
Move the town vote to raise, appropriate, or transfer from available funds such sums of money as may be necessary to defray the expenses of the town, including debt and interest for the ensuing year, and to carry out any vote passed under this article. Item 1, School Department. Personal Services, $7,722,453. Expenses, $858,059. Total, $8,580,512.
Can I have a second? So, we have discussion open now for Item 1. Are there any questions?
Mr. Damaraki.
Oh, okay. Stand up, go ahead.
Rich Damaraki, Bachelor Street. I want to take exception to what the chairman of the school committee said when she gave her talk. She said that they have a balanced budget, and they don't require any additional funds from the town. Now, my understanding is we gave them $600,000, and I don't see anywheres in here where we get to approve or disapprove that. I called the town today, and I got two different answers. One answer was, on Article 25, there's $600,000. That's the amount we're talking about. The second opinion said, no, that has nothing to do with the $600,000 we gave the town. So, I don't know which one is right. But anyways, we did give the school committee $600,000 this year. We gave them $600,000, I believe, last year. Prior to that, it's been $305,000, going back several years. So, I don't know why it's staying at $600,000. That's a lot of money.
Do you want to answer that? Stand up.
Jennifer Bartos, 97 Porter Street, also speaking as the chair. Point of clarification, all I was saying is we weren't going to put an additional amendment forward to ask for money, and the $600,000 was predetermined in our discussions with the Select Board and the town administrator, as well as the Finance Committee.
Do you have a further question?
But even though you had a discussion with the Select Board and the Finance Committee, this group here approves that $600,000 additional amount, which, that I don't see.
My understanding is that anyone on the town floor could offer to amend this budget, as long as it doesn't go below the minimum required budget that's required by the town to put in for the state. So, if somebody wanted to offer an amendment to reduce this budget by any amount up to $600,000, which is what we're above and beyond the minimum, the town floor is free to do that. It's a town meeting, the town votes the budget. What happened was, is that we spent a lot of time during this year between the three committees, the school committee, the finance committee, and the Select Board, to discuss the budget, and looked at a lot of the things that they wanted to do. One of the things, for example, I'll tell you, is that what we discovered this year was that their, the amount that they had had to budget for special education this year was quite a bit more than what they had in past years. And that is really something which is almost completely beyond the control of the school system. So, the Select Board, the Finance Committee, and the school department came to an agreement that they cut a few things out of what they wanted to do, that the $600,000 or the minimum was an appropriate amount for this year. So, that's what's included in this budget proposal. But again, the town is free to do what it wants.
Any further questions? Discussion? Mr. Randall?
Thank you, George Randall, 52 Taylor Street. I'd like to compliment the Finance Committee, and one of the compliments they made earlier about we have to look closely at how we're going to educate our children. My comment to that is that I would hope that the school committee is looking very seriously at the possibility of regionalizing our school system.
Over here, Elaine.
So, Elaine, I'm sorry. Elaine LaFleur, 235 Chigaby Street. Does the school committee apply for grants? We're supposed to have a grant writer. We budgeted three years ago, and the person is not here. So, I presume that you guys, for special ed, you're out there finding as much support possibly by the state or federal government, I presume. Is that a correct statement?
Thank you. Steven Sullivan, Superintendent of Schools. Yeah, so we get, in addition to this, there's federal grants that we receive, but also we're seeking competitive grants for different services to offset. Yes.
Thank you. Any further questions? In order for Item 1 to pass, it must pass by a majority. All those in favor? Thank you. Any opposed? Item 1 passes unanimously. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see your cards. Item 1 passes by a majority. Raise those cards high and proud, people. Oh, no, not right now, but when it's time to vote. So, for the rest of the items under Article 23, we will read in blocks. And then you will have the ability to ask questions on any of the items in that block, but we will vote on each item separately. So, Madam Moderator calls on Mr. Libera to present Items 2 through 5.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Number 2, same motion. The school department transportation budget, $1,007,950. Item 3, same motion. Moderator. Salary, $300. Expenses, $2,675. Total, $2,975. Article 4, same motion. Selectmen. Salary, $10,920,000. Personal services, $255,229. Expenses, $199,000. Capital outlay, $10,000, for a total of $475,149. Item 5, same motion. Finance Committee. Expenses, $2,026.
Any discussion or questions on Items 2, 3, 4, or 5? Rich, go ahead.
Rich Damaraki, Bachelor Street. Whoever puts this budget sheet together, could you please list last year's budget and this year's budget? These numbers are meaningless to us, because they don't mean anything. They're one year, we have to compare them in the sheet.
It is in the budget book.
Page 15, Rich.
Okay.
In your book. It has the last two years.
Okay, I'm looking at the article that was, the sheet that was handed out to me, and it has just the current year, but I see it's also listed somewheres else. But you have to have at least two years to make a decision. Thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Hope.
Dennis Hope, 239 Chigaby Street. Under Article 4, Personal Services, if I'm not mistaken, about three years ago, we approved monies to hire a grant writer. Has the Board of Selectmen done anything moving forward with that? And if so, what's taken so long? We are losing out on millions of dollars in just the transportation grants available under the federal budgets. This is critical. Years ago, we talked about doing a sewer line up New Ludlow Road, over South Street, and down, yeah, East Street. And this is a perfect project to get a grant. They are issuing money like it's snow tomorrow at the federal level. We need a grant writer. Thank you.
We took it out of the budget.
We need to interview for the planner, not the grant writer.
So, that money's been removed from the budget. However, during the timeframe, we did interview a town planner slash grant writer. We went through the process with that person. We offered that person a position with the town, and during negotiations, that person did accept it. However, as time went on, that person decided to take a job with another agency who was willing to pay him more money. So, we haven't had a chance to go back to it as such. And also, too, it's easy to throw up numbers as far as grants and things like that, but it does take a lot of effort to where what money we would qualify for as a town. I always hear people throw out, millions of dollars we could get, billions of dollars. Someone that's seen some of the grants throughout the several years that I've been on the Select Board, some of these grants we don't qualify for, just because of the way the town of Granby is set up.
Go ahead, Elaine.
Elaine LaFleur, 235 Chigaby Street. I'm rather intrigued, first of all. I didn't see an annual report, and I know how critical that is. So, do I have the right to ask? Will that be mailed to every resident? There was no annual report included, and it's really critical information. Secondly, not to be critical, but when you're printing these pages out, please try to do it when we're upside down and all that good stuff. But my concern is, I'm intrigued with the salaries and the expenses. I recently learned, and I guess, you know, I'm pretty involved in Granby town elections and items, but I recently learned that we hired or promoted someone to be an assistant town administrator, and then that person hired a secretary. I'm presuming that those salaries are included in here? And out of curiosity, I didn't ever see anything on, like, Indeed.com, or, you know, where somebody could apply who has grant writing experience, administrator experience. I'm just really concerned that we want to get top-shelf people in this town to promote government. We really need to look for those people that are qualified.
Just a general question, maybe somebody on the board up there can answer. We hear a lot about grant writers. Is there a requirement for matching funds if we do apply for a grant? And is there a process for the town to do that? We can't just apply for something. There probably are some free grants, but most grants probably have a matching fund? And is there a process for the town to look into that?
Just speaking to some of the grants I've seen, some, they all have different qualifications for those. Some grants require a town match, or a certain town percentage that the town participates in the grant, X amount of dollars. Some grants are fully funded grants. So, it all depends on what grants they are, and what you qualify, and how much you qualify for. It's just different types.
Any further discussion or questions? Yes, ma'am, stand up.
Terry Johnson, 98 Bachelor Street. Can we go back to this lady here? You didn't answer her questions. There was no answers to her questions, and I'm interested in it, too, because I did call town hall, and there was no annual reports done. call Town Hall, and there was no annual reports done. And if there was other people hired, I'd also like to know also.
So Elaine, can you ask your questions again? Because it was, it was long, and I think the question got lost in the...
Yeah, well, I like to talk. Elaine LaFleur, 235 Chigaby Street. So I had said that I recently had learned, and I'm rather involved in our town politics, supporting the clerk's office, that we had hired an assistant town administrator who hired a secretary. And I am a little intrigued. I don't want to make this personal, but I am a fund administrator for a multi-employer, multimillion-dollar organization, a union. I have written grants. I have offered my services to write grants on my own time to help the town. And so my question is, is, you know, I didn't see anything on Indeed. I didn't see anything on the website for these positions. I'd like to know who hired, what the hiring credentials were. These people were vetted. I just need to know that we've hired people that are going to provide us annual reports, materials that are printed the right way, and support our town. And I'm just intrigued to know what all this money's about.
We didn't hire a assistant town administrator. We've had assistant town administrator for some years now. That wasn't, I don't know what you're referring to, as a new position, as a new assistant town administrator.
If someone has a question, please make sure you raise your hand, because we can't hear you without the microphone. So Elaine, do you have another question?
I just have a comment. In all the years that I've been in this town, and it's been going on 34, we've had a town administrator. We've had a select board, which, you know, our government honestly could use a little revamping. And we've had a secretary that assisted in a role. I don't recall ever getting the memo or seeing anything in the newspaper or locally on the website about several years ago having an assistant town administrator and then hiring a secretary.
John Libera, one comment I would offer is that I don't remember exactly what it said, or if anything had been said specifically, but I do know we budgeted ahead of time for it at a town meeting. And everything was budgeted, and so that there would not be any expenditures that were not authorized, and wouldn't be a surprise when the expense came up. So at some point or another, directly or indirectly, the town was notified of the personnel that we were going to have, because we budgeted to pay their salaries.
Go ahead, stand up, Jan.
Hi. Jan S. Kovich, 99 Kendall Street. So I just wanted to go to item number two, transportation, and the budget there. Is that the budget to hire the, or contract with the school buses? Is that what the transportation piece is?
Yes.
Okay. And then the additional increase from FY 2023 to 2024, what is that a result of?
The increase is due to, they just issued on RFP for a new three-year contract, and this is the new fee per the new contract. Every three years, we have to bid out the contract for busing of our students. We just recently issued a new one for effective FY '24, and the low bidder for Granby was this price for FY '24.
Rich, I have a question.
Rich DeMaraki, Bachelor Street. Elaine brought up the point of the annual town report. Will that be done, or has it been done, and will we get a copy of it?
It's currently being prepared for the printer. Once it's from the printer, yes, it will be available.
Okay. The next point was the grant writer. It's been over three years. There's no excuse why the town does not have a grant writer. If they want more money than what we're offering, give them more money. At least see how they do the first or second year, see if they get grants. But three or four years is way too long not to have a grant writer. We're losing money.
Unless someone has something different to offer, I'm going to move the question. Jan, do you have another question about the budget, or...
I just wanted to ask a clarifying question. Wasn't the statement made earlier that the grant writer position was removed from the budget?
Yes, it was removed, I believe, last year. Last year from the Select Board budget.
Okay, so that's kind of a, trying to find the best way to say it, but a mute point at this point, then, until we have funds for it again?
We'd have to put the money back into the budget. And I can, what we learned from before, just by the person that we were looking to hire, and what I thought the Select Board thought was a very reasonable and generous salary and package, wasn't close to what they received somewhere else. So that was unfortunate, Rich, to your point. That has, I know I've talked about it, what it would actually cost us to hire a grant writer. They are very expensive. And it's easy to say that we look for one or two years, but I would guess right now they're somewhere up where, close to $100,000 a year for a grant writer, for a solid grant writer.
Ms. Dufresne?
Yes, I just want to make a comment on that as well. We have been trying really hard, the Select Board, in trying to secure grants on our own. We did apply for a municipal vulnerability preparedness grant 2.0. We're waiting to hear back on that. That one does not have any matching to it. It's a one-year collaborative grant that we applied for that would look at basically emergency processes, and it would have the departments working together, with the second year being a $50,000 seed project that the town would not have to match. So it's one of the ones that we are looking towards. There's also One Stop for Growth that we also looked into as well. We just were not as prepared to apply for the final grant on June 3rd. So we are going to be aggressive with that grant this year coming up. So we are trying, but Pioneer Valley Planning Commission is willing to work with us as well. So I don't want you guys to think that we don't ever or can't ever get a grant writer. We do have a regional organization that is willing to work with us. We just have to do the legwork for it. So we have been doing work towards it.
Any further questions, Elaine?
Me again. Elaine LaFleur, 235 Chigaby Street. Mass.gov, if anybody ever gets turned on to it, there's a lot of grants that we are qualified for. Again, I had offered my services. I still would like to offer my services, and you don't even have to pay me. I'm just really, really passionate about this town that I raised my daughters in, and the reason why they refuse to live in Granby is because of this. And nobody speaks up and talks to us. We want answers.
Okay, so we're going to vote on the budget for items two, three, four, and five. Each one of those items has to pass by a majority. So all those in favor of item number two, please raise your cards. Thank you. Any opposed? The majority, item two passes by a majority. Item three must pass by a majority. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. Any opposed? Item three passes unanimously. Item four must pass by a majority. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? The motion passes by a majority. And for item five, it must pass by a majority. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? The motion passes unanimously. The moderator calls on Mr. Libera to present the motion, items six, seven, eight, and nine.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Item six, the same motion. Town accountant. Personal services, $30,500. Expenses, $31,150. Total, $61,650. Item seven, same motion. Assessors. Salary, $12,507. Personal services, $43,462. Expenses, $20,865. Total, $76,834. Item eight, same motion. Town treasurer. Salary, $56,189. Expenses, $10,312. Total, $66,501. Item nine, same motion. Tax collector. Salary, $55,200. Personal services, $15,000. Expenses, $22,693. Total, $92,893.
Second? Any discussion for items six, seven, eight, or nine? In order for item six to pass, it must pass by a majority. All those, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Rich.
Rich DeMaraki, Bachelor Street. This is another pet peeve I've had. It goes back over 10 years, I would say, that the town administrator is also the town accountant. Now, the town administrator has many things on his plate to do, way too many things. We need a separate town accountant, town administrator. Separation of duties. I'm a CPA. It's a common thing we always bring up, separation of duties. I won't get into it, but I'll approach it from the work standpoint. The town administrator has way too much work to do. We need to separate those two functions. Thank you.
Any further comments? In order for the motion to pass under item six, it must pass by a majority. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. Any opposed? The motion passes by a majority. The item seven must pass by a majority. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Item eight must pass by a majority. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. And item nine must pass by a majority. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. Any opposed? Item nine passes unanimously. The moderator now calls on Mr. Libera to present the items 10 through 13.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Item 10, same motion. Personnel board, expenses, $500. Item 11, same motion. Town clerk. Salary, $64,818. Personal services, $44,911. Expenses, $3,005. Total, $112,734. Item 12, same motion. Board of Registars. Personal services, $2,000. Expenses, $37,975. Total, $39,975. Item 13, same motion. Planner, conservation agent. Personal services, $88,586. Expenses, $1,900. Total, $90,486.
Second?
Second.
Any questions or comments on items 10, 11, 12, or 13? In order for item 10 to pass, it must pass by a majority. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. For item 11, it must be a majority. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Item 12 must pass by a majority. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. Any opposed? Item 12 passes unanimously. And item 13 is a majority vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. Any opposed? Item 13 passes by a majority. The moderator now calls on Mr. Libera to present the motion, the items 14, 15, 16, and 17.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Item 14, same motion. Board of Appeals. Expenses, $1,640. Item 15, same motion. Public Buildings. Personal services, $218,613. Expenses, $787,404. Capital outlay, $28,745. Total, $1,034,762. Item 16, same motion. Police Department. Personal services, $1,303,567. Expenses, $74,549. Capital outlay, $1,030. Same motion. Auxiliary police, zero for expenses.
Second? Any discussion, items 14, 15, 16, or 17? Rich, go ahead.
Rich DeMaraki, Bachelor Street. On public buildings, expenses are increasing like $180,000. Could you tell us what that is, or why it's so high?
Come on up, Jeremy.
Jeremy Carrier, 2 Phillips Circle. So maintenance supervisor. So a lot of the expenses have gone up for this year, because we have a lot of services that have to be performed on the buildings that are not a normal every-year occurrence. We have things such as our fire sprinkler systems that need preventive maintenance that are an every-five-year occurrence. We have other systems in the building that's the same thing, heating, air conditioning. We have a lot of our services that are also underneath DEP regulations that we need to have, because we're on a public water supply. So items like that, that it's not a regular occurrence, the expenses are going up quite considerably to have contracts with companies. Thank you.
Thank you. Further questions or discussion? In order for item 14 to pass, it must pass by a majority. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. Any opposed? The motion passes by a majority. Item 15 must pass by a majority. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. Any opposed? The motion passes by a majority. Item 16 must pass by a majority. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? Item 16 passes unanimously. And item 17, do I have to vote? We only devote a number 17. So the moderator now calls on Mr. Libera to present the motion, the items 18, 19, 20, and 21.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Item 18, same motion. Dispatch. Personal services, $294,709. Expenses, $51,653. Total, $346,362. Item 19, same motion. Fire Department. Everybody listen up. The numbers are not where they're on here on the page. Personal services, $467,506. Expenses, $57,367. Capital outlay, $54,787. Total, $579,660. Item 20, same motion. Inspections Department. Personal services, $101,000. Expenses, $24,000. Expenses, $24,890. Total, $125,890. Item 21, same motion, preventative inspections, board of health. Personal services, $14,209. Expenses, $4,016. Total, $18,225. Because I'm making a different motion for this, I want to talk about it. But my motion is to reduce that. Why, I'm the first person reading the amendment.
Well, I'm in the main motion. So, you have to read the motion, this motion, and then ask for the amendment to change the budget.
Okay, I thought that the one article says more or less.
No, it does say more or less, but this is what's been printed, you have to amend it if you want to change it.
Okay, do I do this right?
He may change the motion on the fly. The motion can change up until the moment it's read.
Right, so it's a change, someone can amend it.
So, I need a second for the items 18, 19, 20, and 21. And I understand that the numbers aren't matching on 19, but that'll be explained. So, can I have a second?
Second.
So, I will now open the floor discussions on items 18, 19, 20, and 21. And I'll have Mr. Libera talk first about item 19.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Item 19 is $83,000 less in personal services than is what's written here. The Finance Committee later on, when we do a motion for the reserve fund, is going to increase the amount in the reserve fund by that $83,000. Basically, we think that the town should take a second try at getting some accountability from the people who are in fact running the town. The $83,000 we're expecting to take out here, first of all, there's plenty of money in here to get through a few months' service. Also, the fire department and ambulance department are basically the same thing. They're not going to be a problem. But, we expect to see a study done as to why these extra personnel are needed and why we're not trying to do that on the fly. We want to see an actual study done, reasons given, and a chance to make an assessment as to whether or not we're in the middle of just increasing, expanding the operations of departments or whether there are legitimate reasons for it. So, once again, the money is going to be there in the reserve fund, and the Finance Committee will be able to transfer it without any problem if they're convinced that there is a reason for doing it. We report back to the town. If we're not convinced, another town meeting for a cost of about $300, we're told, can have the money voted. If you want to bypass any kind of rigorous examination as to why we're spending money, that would be possible to do with another town meeting with a very little cost. And there's certainly money in the reserve fund to pay for that. So, once again, we're not necessarily proposing that the budget be cut, but we are saying the town deserves an answer. Thank you.
So, John, can you repeat the number?
Yes. The number for personnel services, for personal services is $467,506. That number is $83,000 less than what's printed here in the booklet. The expenses numbers is the same, $57,367. The capital outlay is the same, $54,787,000. The total is $579,660, which is $83,000 less than what's written here. And again, if this passes in this form, then we would propose to put it into the reserve fund so that the process of getting the money to the department would be as easy as possible.
So, is that understandable? Any questions or comments on that? Mr. Randall?
Thank you very much, George Randall, 52 Taylor. A couple of comments if I may, as this involves the salary for the fire chief. I'd like to compliment our new fire chief. Came into our town following a very terrible time for our fire department. I stand before you to say that I follow the fire department religiously as much as I'm allowed to do. I'm very satisfied that the fire department has been run and is running. I'm satisfied that if you have a major malfunction at your home, our fire chief is the man that you want to have there to oversee the operations of any major incident. I'm not happy with the way that this particular budget has been presented. I would ask that the town vote no on the proposal of the Finance Committee and pass this budget as it was printed in our book.
So, Mr. Randall, you're proposing an amendment to the motion. The motion as presented was $467,506. So, if you want to amend that to the $550,506, you are able to do so.
So, what you're telling me then is that the budget that is printed here at $662,000 is in error?
That is a motion that you see in the book, and the article says more or less. So, it can be more or less in the motion.
I'm still confused, but I'll.
All right, I'll let the attorney explain it.
Brian O'Toole, town council. Mr. Randall, what has occurred up here was that the chair of the Finance Committee was charged with reading the motion. He read the motion that he would like the town to consider, regardless of what was written in the materials that were prepared beforehand. So, that is the motion as on the floor. If members of the town meeting want to amend the motion that was presented to a different number, if it's the number that's in the materials that was presented, that's allowed with a motion to amend.
Is that clear?
Chairman, could I make a comment?
Go ahead.
So, basically, as I understand it, what we're doing is we are still budgeting exactly the same amount of money. We are still budgeting $662,660. However, the Finance Committee, which has the power and the right to read whatever numbers because the language of the article says more or less than whatever is printed, what we have read is that right now, we're going to reduce the $550,000 we're proposing. The motion is, the amount is $83,000 less than what's printed, okay? The total budget is not changed. Because when we get to the reserve fund at the end of this process, we, if you support this motion in the way it's read, will be adding $83,000 to the $130,000 of reserve money. We are proposing this because we want the study done, because there's a consideration where we're now going to have two ambulances in the future, probably, more employees. And we had asked last year that we want that number. We're just trying to enforce some accountability to try to keep control of the budget, given how tight our money is. So, that's really what it is. So, if you don't want the article as it's read, but as it's printed, then you, Mr. Randall, need to make a motion to amend the article. Because what Mr. Libera read is what is really before you to initially vote on. I hope, hopefully, that's clear to everybody.
Thank you for your explanation, I'm satisfied with that.
Micheline, do you have a question?
Yes, a question and a statement. I'm Micheline Turgeon, 320 Taylor Street. At the time before Chief O'Neill, I'm a very hard supporter of Chief O'Neill, but prior to him, I was the interim fire chief. When they asked us to do a study, they didn't want us to do it personally. They want us to have a third party come in and do the study for the fire department. We never heard anything back of who to obtain to do the study. So, that's why they didn't receive any information, because we didn't receive any information. Because I was the one in charge at that time. And my deputy chief at the time and I had a meeting with the Finance Committee. We agreed, but it went nowhere. Because I had all the numbers. Chief O'Neill has the same numbers that we were able to get to, but they wanted a third party. That's the answer to the question.
Thank you. Ms. Bartos?
Jennifer Bartos, 97 Porter Street. My question is, at the beginning of the meeting for the special town meeting, the articles, when there was an amendment made, it was read as posted for the two weeks, and the amendment was made afterwards. I find it very confusing that Article 19 was not posted with the correct numbers. And so, I think that personally, I'm sure I'll be shut down, but it feels like the article should be read as it was posted for the two weeks and then a proper amendment made for the two-thirds approval and discussion made. Because it feels like this, they've had this article, and if they didn't want to do it, it should have been printed the correct way. And then my follow-up comment, I don't know. And then, before I make my final decision, I would like to know what kind of impact the $83,000 being removed from the budget will have on the fire department.
So, to answer your first question, the what is published two weeks before a town meeting is a warrant, and those articles are warning the public as to what will be discussed at town meeting. The numbers in the articles, if you look at how the article is drafted, says more or less. So, those numbers aren't hard and fast. So, they can go up or down within a certain amount. What you're reading now in front of you are the motions. So, the movement can change those numbers.
That was a separate.
That's a separate, that's a separate issue. So, for the second question, which was how? No, your second question about the $83,000 in the budget? Can you answer that?
The $83,000? What was the question?
If we lessen the personnel services by $83,000, what does that mean to the fire department? Because this is the budget they base their personnel on.
First of all, the amount of money that we spend, I'll tell you how we've run the reserve fund in the past years. When requests are made for money, if they come in at the beginning of the year, since departments are allowed to spend their expense budget on virtually anything that's expenses and their personnel budget on virtually anything that's personnel, we ask them, we take note of the fact that they're going to need more money at the end of the year. So, they requested it upfront and told us that they're going to run out. We tell them to wait till they get to the point where they're actually running out of money, or if they cannot have the facility anymore to move funds from a different portion of the budget to that budget, and then come back to us. And then, the Finance Committee has its meeting and then transfers the money at that point. We don't do it in the middle, and we don't do it right in the beginning because there are a lot of unexpected contingencies, both plus and minus, that could come up. And so, we just wait for a period of time to see what's going to happen with the budget. But we're told way ahead of time that they're going to want money, it's going to need money. So, that's what we expect to happen for the same thing here now. Remember, the fire department and the ambulance department are the same people. They're virtually the same people. So, there's plenty of money to go for a long, long time to pay people without having any worry about it. But what we would expect to happen is that in the beginning of the year, maybe even before the fiscal year, that we get a study that shows exactly what they plan on doing with personnel, how they're planning on using them, that's much different from what we were told last year at this meeting. That's all we're saying. There shouldn't be any impact in the beginning.
Chief?
So, this budget's proposed, so what happened at the special meeting won't happen again. Again, there's contingencies to that, but I've put forth what we will expend, and this is the budget we need to move forward and operate the fire and EMS department within the town.
And the town may accept that it has no choice. That what you vote is meaningless. If that's what you want, we amend the budget, set it back.
I have no problem doing a study. We have, if it needs to be a professional study, then that's a little bit different, but we have all the data in our reporting system that we can give. We missed 168 calls last year to mutual aid departments for EMS. So, that's revenue that was lost by the town because we haven't won ambulance, and our ambulance was on another call or at a hospital. So, that's revenue lost. And that's all information that I'm able to give to whoever needs it.
Mr. Bale? Can you wait for the mic?
Basically, what we're doing here, if we accept the motion as written, is we're saying that the Finance Committee does better at deciding how the fire department should appropriate its personnel and spend its money. I'm not saying that what happened last year with the over-expenses happened correctly. We also had a change of fire chiefs, obviously. But what this does, it doesn't give the town more power because the Finance Committee more power over the fire department. So, if the fire department has a problem, they have to go to the Finance Committee and justify it rather than it being in their budget because we trust what they're going to say to us now. So, it's a matter of trust, and it's a matter of who gets to be in control of this $83,000. I don't think the Finance Committee should. I'd like to see this amended to back to the original motion.
So, you're asking for an amendment?
Yes.
Can you please put that amendment in writing, in the form in your booklet? I need a second for the amendment. A motion to stop debate on the main discussion on item, particularly item 19, to discuss the amendment. Can I have a motion? And a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. Any opposed? So, now the floor, it passes by a majority, the amendment, discussion for the amendment. So, now the floor is open to discuss the amendment which is being written, which I believe is to put the personnel services back to $550,506. So, the total budget would be $662,660. Any discussion on that amendment? Mr. Hool?
This is my stickler. Strong Chief's Law. I think the Finance Committee is overstepping their boundaries, and again, like Mr. Bale said, trying to tell the fire chief how to operate his budgets. If he wants to do it in good faith, I would recommend to the chief that he gives him the stats that's in the computers and be done with it. But, I would like an answer from town council on strong, is this infringing the rights of the strong chief's law?
Short answer, no. Simply because we are here tonight to appropriate the money that the fire chief would have under the strong chief's law. Okay, he can't, he's going to have the amount of money that we approve tonight, whatever amount that is. Certainly, if he needed more, much like we did earlier in the night with a special town meeting, he can request it. So, in the administration and operation of the department, that's. that's not what we're talking about here. What we're debating is what funds are going to be appropriated for fiscal year 2024 at this point, based upon this debate and how these numbers are being brought forth. $83,000, I believe the, the fire chief is indicating to the town members that he's going to need that. The finance committee is asking the town not to provide that at this point. And it's going to be up to you, as town meeting members, to decide which way to fall on this tonight.
Do you have a follow-up question?
How can I put it? If we vote on the article presented from the finance committee?
Well, right now, we're voting on, we're talking about the amendment as presented.
Okay, I understand, but this is all one big mess. Will he have to apply? When his budget is expired, will he have to apply for that additional $83,000 if it is voted according to what was presented by the finance committee?
If the amendment gets voted down, we go back to what was presented by the finance committee, which is less $83,000, which means he will have less $83,000.
Correct. But that 83, according to the finance committee, is going to be in the reserve fund.
Well, that's another amendment.
Will he have to go to the reserve, the finance committee, to ask for a transfer from the reserve fund for $83,000?
Let me, let me answer that. No, the answer's no. There are two options. There'll be two options. One, if the study is done, and the finance committee gets to see the study and agrees with it, what we were asking for last year, what the town agreed to last year, then the finance committee, because of it has the authority over the reserve fund, would be able to transfer the money directly to the fire department. If the finance committee does not agree, and says this doesn't make any sense, it's a major change in operation, or whatever, then the finance committee presumably would not offer the money through the reserve fund. But it's still open, it's still open to have a special town meeting, to ask for a special town meeting, and have a special town meeting transfer the funds. So there are, there are two options. At least those two options.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Are there further questions about the amendment that's on the floor, which is increasing the motion? Yes?
Terry Johnson, 98 Bachelor Street. I just want a, an explanation. If this, you, if Micheline and the finance board got together last year, why did it stop? This should be already settled by now.
Well, first of all, what we thought that the town asked for last year was a study. And that's what we asked for. We do not recall asking for third parties to do the study. Micheline says we do. We don't remember that. I don't know what the rest of you recall. Probably nobody recalls anything. It's what I was, is the most likely possibility. But, so that's, that's where we stand. We were just surprised that, independent, independent of the question of the study, money was spent without it being pre-authorized by the town. We had a mechanism, we thought, to allow it to be pre-authorized. It was bypassed entirely. Money was spent. Operations were changed. And that's what I think the town, whether you're for any kind of strong fire department, or not strong fire department, strong fire, is independent question. It has nothing to do with this. The question is not whether you get to spend what was allocated, however you feel like it. It's the question of whether you get to spend more that was allocated. That's the issue.
Mr. Randall?
George Randall, 52 Taylor. So as I understand things, in support of the fire chief's budget, it's imperative that this amendment pass. I understand that there's a lot of confusion amongst the voters. So I'm standing before you to support the amendment. And the amendment will forward to the original motion. It's important that we support the fire chief's budget.
Are there any more questions or discussion on the amendment? So in order for the amendment to pass, it must pass by a majority. Again, the amendment is bringing the total budget back to what is printed, which is 662,660. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? The amendment passes by a majority. So now on the floor is the items 18, 19 as amended, 20 and 21. Is there any further discussion on any of those items? Elaine?
Elaine LaFleur, 235 Chickaby Street. I'm intrigued with inspections department. Do we have a building inspector? And what does inspections department for $101,000, $125,000? When you look at page 17 in the finance book, we're 22, in 2022 and 2023, we are, you know, reasonably increased. But in 2024, it's gone up for an inspector that I called a long time ago, and still waiting for him to call me back. Do we have an inspector? Is this building? Is this, the restrooms? What is this inspection?
Okay. We used to, we had a building inspector for the amount that was listed in the 22 and 23 budgets. He has subsequently retired. We tried to see if we could join forces with the surrounding community. They will not, they don't have anybody who can give us the amount of time necessary to do our, our inspections and our zoning enforcement. The average cost of a building commissioner, not an inspector, a commissioner, only a commissioner can issue permits under the Commonwealth of Massachusetts laws. Those are averaging, are now between $95,000 and $100,000 a year, because they have to be certified by the state. When South Adley lost theirs, they stole Hollyoaks. When Hollyoke looked, they stole Chickabees. We can't compete with the large communities. So I am putting together $100,000 to make this a 40-hour-a-week position for zoning and building commissioner services, so that we can have a shot at stealing it from another community at this point in time.
Anyone else have a question? If I go back to Elaine? Jennifer?
Jennifer Bartos, 97 Porter Street. Does this include any of the other inspectors, plumbing, septic, electrical?
Electrical and gas.
Okay. And then where would plumbing be?
Plumbing is under Board of Health.
Thank you.
Elaine?
Elaine LaFleur, 235 Chickaby Street. So you're just being proactive, hoping that you're going to find someone, maybe on Indeed.com, that wants to be our building inspector, our full-time person. And like the grant writer from three years ago, how long has this been in process? Is this a six-month, three-month, two-year? Is this yesterday we decided this? I just would like some accountability as to the goal and timeline.
Number one, we will advertise in The Beacon, which is a publication issued by the Mass Municipal Association. We will be advertising on the building officials of Western Mass and other state agencies to try and get people who are already certified by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to do the job. If we go out to Indeed, we may not get someone who's certified. And that is a three-year process for them to become certified. I want somebody who can come in, be certified, and come in and do the job immediately, and not have to wait for training.
Promise my last comment. Elaine LaFleur, 235 Chickaby Street. So our building inspector is more important than a grant writer?
You want to answer that? It's just comment.
No one said that. I, I think, I understand, but both positions are very important to the town. That is, that is true, that we are looking in for both. It's just going to take time. And as you talked about the grant writer earlier, that's something the select board members up here are still entertaining that. Again, we just found out that it's a very costly expense to hire a grant writer. And as Mr. Martin just spoke about, it's a very costly expense to hire a building commissioner. But I also appreciate earlier that you mentioned that you're willing to donate your time to be part of that. And I appreciate that. And I think the select board, after we could just discuss that, may take you up on that offer.
So in order for any of the items, 18, 19, 20, or 21 to pass, they all must pass by a majority. So all those in favor of item 18, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? 18 passes unanimously. All those in favor of item 19 as amended, please raise your cards. Thank you. Any opposed?
Yes.
Item 19 passes by a majority. Item 20, all those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. Any opposed? Item 20 passes unanimously. And all those in favor of item 21, please raise your cards. Thank you. Any opposed? Item 21 passes unanimously. The moderator calls on Mr. Libera to present the items 22, 23, 24, and 25.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Item 22, same motion, sealer of weights and measures, expenses $3,700. Item 23, same motion, emergency management, expenses $10,475. Item 24, same motion, highway department, personal services $446,587. Expenses $120,150. Maintenance of roads $352,500. Capital $6,300, for a total of $925,537. Same motion for ice and snow control. Personal expenses $85,391. Expenses $59,000. Maintenance of roads $122,000. $20,000. Total $286,391.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion of items 22 through 25? Come on up.
Stephanie Perrin, 257 Bachelor Street. Just a quick question. The snow and ice control, are these numbers reflective of what we've already voted to remove from that budget?
It's from different, different fiscal year.
Sorry, could you repeat that?
Okay.
Go into the microphone.
All right. I was just asking if these numbers were reflective of the numbers that we've already voted to take away from that department?
Different fiscal year.
Different fiscal year. Okay, sorry.
Go ahead.
Anthony Serini, 3-seater drive. Question for the highway department, under the maintenance of roads. How does this, this number be affected by what I just heard, by the state is reducing highway funds? Does that, does this number get affected by that?
We put together what we felt was a reasonable budget. In general, up until about five years ago, our roads were deteriorating every year. And then the town elected to fund some extra monies and a couple of warrant articles for us. And we were increasing our asphalt expense budget, which is in this, included in this amount. It started to turn around, our pavement condition index started to get better in the last few years. But this year, the price of asphalt is skyrocketing again. It went from $60-something dollars a ton to almost $100 a ton. So we are going to have a problem in the future, but it's a crapshoot trying to predict where the asphalt prices are going to be two months from now.
Any further questions? Oh, go ahead.
I just have a question about the emergency management expenses. What does that include?
Okay. The, the expenses under the emergency management budget. First is the cost for the code red system. That is the system that we use to notify residents in an emergency, and is used as. That are being asked to be put town-wide. It is also funds the right-to-know program. So that, so that, because what we have to do is have a list of all chemicals used within the town of Granby. And therefore, we have to budget for books and things of that nature. Then we plan some potential emergency management supplies, just in case there is an emergency over the course of the year, that we may have to open a shelter or provide other type of expenses during an emergency.
Thank you.
Can I ask another question on that?
Sure.
So can the, sorry, Crystal Dufresne, 11 Taylor Street. So can the general broadcast be used in messages out to the town, notifying them of town meeting and other special town meetings that are coming out, instead of just having it on a board outside? Because it says it's a general broadcast, he just said. So can we use that system for that?
We do use that. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because a lot of residents did not get it, and they didn't even know that there was a town vote, or. I guess, can we use it for elections as well?
Yeah. So we, we, you know. What's that?
Come to the microphone.
Oh, sure.
Don't they have to sign up for it?
Sign up for it.
So, yeah. Individuals have to sign up. So some people don't realize that. So if they go on our website, where it says the code red, you know, and they could always probably call Lynn or somebody, right? If they needed help to get on it. And so they do have to be include, you know, they have to sign up for it. But it did go out twice, I believe, on Saturday for a town meeting. And it did for the previous election. And it did go out, I think, on the other town meeting, too.
Yes, it did.
Yeah. So we've been trying to utilize that for that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
In order for items 22 through 25 to pass, they each must pass by a majority. All those in favor of item 22, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? Item 22 passes unanimously. For item 23, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? Item 23 passes unanimously. Item 24, please raise your cards. Thank you. Any opposed? 24 passes unanimously. And item 25, please raise your cards. Thank you. Any opposed? Item 25 passes by a majority. The moderator calls on Mr. Libera to present items 26, 27, 28, and 29.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Item 26, same motion, cemetery. Personal services $32,904. Expenses $4,400. Total $37,304. Item 27, same motion, Board of Health. Salary $3,231. Personal services $44,798. Expenses $13,928. Total $61,957. Item 28, same motion, council on aging.
Item 28, same motion, council on aging, personal services $115,106,000, expenses $4,525. Item 29, same motion, senior lunch program, personal services $20,782.
Second?
Second.
Any questions on items 26, 27, 28, or 29? All right, for each of these items to pass, they must pass by a majority. All those in favor of item 26, please raise your cards. Thank you. Any opposed? 26 passes unanimously. For item 27, please raise your cards. Thank you. Any opposed? Item 27 passes unanimously. For item 28, please raise your cards. Thank you. Any opposed? Item 28 passes unanimously. And all those in favor of item 29, please raise your cards. Thank you. Any opposed? Item 29 passes unanimously. The moderator calls on Mr. Libera to present the motions under items 30, 31, 32, and 33, and 34.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Item 30, same motion, veteran services, personal services $23,000, expenses $51,300, total $74,300. Item 31, same motion, public library, personal services $170,271,000, expenses $62,968, Leslie Grant and aid of $18,519, net expenses being $44,449. Total budget $214,720. Item 32, same motion, historical commission, expenses $250. Item 33, same motion, retirement of debt, the principal on permanent death, $612,400. Same motion, interest, $424,673.
Second? Any questions on items 30 through 34? All right, in order for any of these items to pass, they must pass by a majority. All those in favor of item 30, please raise your cards. Thank you. Any opposed? Item 30 passes unanimously. For item 31, raise your cards. Thank you. Any opposed? Item 31 passes unanimously. All those in favor of item 32, please raise your cards. Thank you. Any opposed? 32 passes unanimously. For item 33, please raise your cards if you're in favor. Thank you. Any opposed? 33 passes unanimously, and for item 34, in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. Any? Item 34 passes unanimously. The moderator now calls on Mr. Libera to present the rest of the items 35 through 39. Oh, is it? Oh, and a 40.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Item 35, same motion, casualty and liability insurance, $297,853. Item 36, same motion, county retirement, $1,594,518. Item 37, same motion, workers' compensation, $157,917. Item 38, same motion, unemployment compensation, $24,541. Item 39, same motion, group life and health insurance, $1,818,975. And item 40, same motion, reserve fund, $130,000.
Second? Any questions on items 35, 36, 37, 38, 39, or 40? In order for any of these items to pass, it must pass by a majority, so for item 35, if you're in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. Any opposed? Item 35 passes unanimously. For item 36, if you're in favor, raise your cards. Thank you. Any opposed? Item 36 passes unanimously. For item 37, please raise your cards if you're in favor. Thank you. Any opposed? 37 passes unanimously. Item 38, please raise your cards if you're in favor. Thank you. Any opposed? Item 38 passes unanimously, and for item 39, all in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. Any opposed? Item 39 passes unanimously, and for item 40, all those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. Any opposed? Item 40 passes unanimously. The moderator now calls on Ms. Dufresne to present the motion under Article 24.
Madam Moderator, I move to see if the town will vote to transfer from the Capital Equipment Needs Stabilization Fund $152,400 or a greater or lesser amount for the purpose of reducing the funding from tax levy for the fiscal year 2024 appropriations.
Second?
Second.
End discussion?
This article is to cover the debt service on purchases that were approved by the Capital Improvement Committee in prior years.
Any questions or comments? Mr. Hool? The mic's coming.
I have a question on what was stated earlier about the school budget and what was appropriated last year for the gymnasium and all that, and only certain funds could be used because of, we would have to bring the building up to code. What happened to the other funds that we allocated last year? Would it go back into the Cap, Capital Improvement Fund this year?
The second article, I think you were talking, was the gym repairs.
Correct.
Though, that was funded through free cash, so right now it's just sitting as an appropriation still, okay? At some point, I could close it because it's, or I could bring it to town meeting to close out the appropriation. I probably will at some point, because by the time three years rolls around, it will probably be more expensive to do the proposed renovations at that point, but I would rather wait until maybe closer to the three-year period. That way, it would roll into free cash and be available as an appropriation item for the school for another article for those repairs.
So are there any questions on the motion under Article 24? In order for this motion to pass, it must pass by a two-thirds majority, so all those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. Any opposed? So the motion under Article 24 passes unanimously. The moderator now calls on Ms. Dufresne to present the motion under Article 25.
Madam Moderator, I move to see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash $600,000 for the purpose of reducing the funding from tax levy for the fiscal year 2024 appropriations, or take any other action in regard thereto.
Second?
Second.
End discussion?
This article is to use free cash to reduce the tax levy.
Any questions?
I actually have a question. How much is left in our free cash? Because at our last, our last town meeting, we only, we had less than $600,000.
No, we didn't.
After looking at what our total was and what we appropriated.
We had $600,073 available after last town meeting.
$600,073?
So we have 73 cents left in free cash.
So in order for the motion under Article 25 to pass, it must pass by a majority. All those in favor? Thank you. Any opposed? The motion passes by a majority. The moderator calls on Ms. Dufresne to present the motion under Article 26.
Madam Moderator, I move to see if the town will vote to transfer from account number 30-122-5801, bond premiums to be applied, $11,989.35 or a greater or lesser amount for the purpose of reducing the funding from tax levy for the fiscal year 2024 appropriations, or take any other action in regard thereto.
Second?
Second.
End discussion?
When the town borrowed for the East Meadow building project, when the bids came in, there was a bond premium. Per Department of Revenue Regulations, this premium must be amortized?
Amortized.
Amortized, thank you, over the life of the loan to reduce the amount to be raised by the debt exclusion vote.
Are there any questions? In order for this motion to pass, it must pass by a majority. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. Any opposed? The motion under Article 26 passes unanimously. The moderator calls on Ms. Dufresne to present the motion under Article 27.
Madam Moderator, I move to see if the town will vote to assess the amounts raised and appropriated under these articles and warrants on the estates and personal property of the town of Granby.
Second? End discussion?
This article allows assessors to issue tax bills to the taxpayers in Granby.
Any questions? In order for this motion to pass, it must pass by a majority. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. The moderator now calls for a motion to dissolve the annual town meeting. Second? All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. All opposed? Thank you.